Good evening and welcome to the Cedar Falls Board of Education meeting this Monday, May 12th. Having just come off of Mother's Day yesterday, we want to acknowledge and honor all the mothers in our district and also think of those who have lost their mothers and how that day might be hard for some. We'll go ahead and kick off the meeting tonight. I would like to call this meeting to order. First item on our agenda being the consent agenda, which we have quite a few items in, so we have our approval of agenda and last board meetings minutes, approval of accounts payable, our HR report, and our open enrollment report, as well as two annual items, which is our waste disposal bid, and our fiscal year '26 lease agreement with the AEA for the River Hills property. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Director Peterson, is there a second?
Second.
Director Meyer? And I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. We will move on. We didn't have anyone reach out to us for public comment tonight, so we will move past that agenda item and move into communications. So we have quite a few items on our agenda for communications tonight. So first up, we will have Ms. Natalie Schmattiki from the high school give us our student board update.
Hi, everybody. So today, actually, we had our teacher appreciation breakfast for all the teachers. We had lots of food and gifts for all of the teachers to show them how much we appreciate their work over the year. In addition to that, we had our Do Better, Be Better money that we donated to families in need around the Cedar Valley. In total, I don't know if this was said at the last meeting, but we made $1,078. And that's pretty much wrapping up our year for us. We don't have a lot going on since seniors are graduating in two weeks, so, yep.
Okay, well, thank you for your update, and this is probably your last update, and so we want to say a hearty thank you. We know that you're very busy. You're involved in a lot of activities at the high school, and so we want to say thank you from the board, and we also want to honor you with a recognition plaque as well. So I will come down and give that to you, and we'll get a little photo op with Janelle. So once a month, we try to just showcase something in the district that's maybe notable or exciting or something to share with the public. So this month, we have some CAPS students. Their project was Films on the Field, which was a TPC fundraiser, so we would invite you to come up and tell us about your project.
Hi, I'm Kate Hollahan.
I'm Jake Gray.
And we are part of the CAPS Business Solutions Program, and we have been tasked with raising money for the new Tiger Performance Center. We've been working alongside Ryan Crainer and Joyce Coyle. The main thing that we've been working is to plan a big event that can be sustainable and be hosted continually once a year or just this year. We've also done a lot of social media marketing just to bring awareness to the event and to bring awareness to all the benefits that the new Shields Tiger Performance Center will have to offer. So we really have been focusing our time on hosting a Films on the Field event. This is an event we plan to host June 14th from 6:30 to 9:00 PM. This is going to be an event where we host two movies, first a children's movie, and then, second, we both to host a teen movie with a $7 admissions fee if you go to one and a $12 admissions fee if you plan to go to both. This is a great way where we could host a promotions video to raise awareness for all it could offer, and also host two movies that people can come and watch and be on the Tiger Performance Field. This just allows people to get through the door and actually see the building that we're going to have and all the construction of the Tiger Performance Center. We just want to make this accessible to all families, the community, get students in there, and we've been doing a lot with Lindsay Cota to help create signup geniuses. We've been posting things on the 2025 pages and the announcements on Schoology just to let the students know that we need volunteers and so we can hopefully get that, especially athlete volunteers, to be able to talk about why this new TPC is going to benefit them specifically, and just anyone else that wants to volunteer and help at this event or come and watch.
Yeah, we also have another associate that's usually here with us. He has senior night tonight for soccer, but we really appreciate Joyce for giving us this opportunity to share this with you guys. Our goal, as she very well stated, is just to get the community hearing about this event. We really hope to raise as much money as we can for the Performance Center, to get it built as soon as possible, because we do believe in the impact that it can and will have for future generations in athletics, so.
Do you have something to unveil to us tonight? Are you going to tell us the movies tonight?
I would love to know.
Yeah, so to get some picks on the movies, we had to look at licensing. That was a big obstacle for us, but we posted a survey as well to try and see what the community would want to watch. And for the first movie, the kids movie, right now, we're thinking of choosing the Lego Movie. And then for the teen movie, we are going to go with the original Jumanji. So both of those got pretty popular picks, so.
Yeah, we wanted it to be something that the community would enjoy, so we made sure to get the surveys posted on the announcements as well, and we posted polls on the social media pages just so that the students can be really involved and choose the movies they'd like to see, because we obviously want to get the most people out there. So if people are seeing a movie that they enjoy to watch with their family and friends, we thought it'd be really important to make sure the public was involved with that as well.
So what's one way that the board can support you and help you accomplish this?
Yeah, I think right now, we're really just trying to meet, like, with different sponsors. We've sent out lots of emails and applications for different things like Fairway, VGM, Community Bank. We're really just trying to get in contact with businesses that we can cover the licensing fee, because it can be really expensive. So we really just want help with marketing that and getting the word out, not just for sponsors, but also just for the community, because it's just a really fun event, and even if people don't want to donate, I think it's great to just get them through the doors to see what the impact of the TPC is going to have.
Wouldn't you like the board to come and support it and bring their family and friends and communicate that out on their social media page of what you guys are doing? Because you've worked really hard. You've worked really hard and you've given a lot of hours to it in just a really short period of time. So kudos to you guys, and I know Jesus couldn't be here tonight because of a soccer conflict, I think, soccer, right? Soccer conflict. So I just, I can't tell you how grateful I am that the three of you stood up and just took it on, and you've just been really, really amazing associates. So I'm excited for the end result and all the help that you've given us.
Yeah, we would love to see you all there, obviously. It's sometimes hard to make it in the summer to every weekend, so we picked one that we thought would be the most convenient for community members to make it to, so we do hope to see you all there. Or just like, we have our Instagram page, is the Shields Tiger Performance Center that we've started, and we know that Suzie Hines is running the Facebook, and she also has access to our Instagram as well, so just like, see our content, what we've been created. We've been doing a lot of interviews with students to explain why they think the TPC is important, just to get that community feel as well, to see actual student athletes and how it's beneficial to them.
And yeah, we do, we know we've got a final meeting tomorrow, but we do appreciate the time and the kindness that you and the rest of the committee have shown us. We were really critical about picking our project at first, but we're really happy with the decision that we've made. You guys have made the process very easy for us. We hope that we've made it easy for you guys as well, and hopefully that the impacts that we've made will carry on. It was a big goal of us to give you guys something sustainable, so we thank you for your time as well.
My pleasure.
Good, well, thank you, Jake and Kate, and for the member that couldn't be here, thank you to him as well. So, and thanks for coming and sharing with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have Janelle here for our district update.
Yes, always tough acts to follow. All right, we'll pull up the presentation here. One of the things I really wanted to highlight tonight was the, another kind of CAPS experiences, our CAPS Med program, and all of our CAPS students are paired with a Western Home resident as part of the Legacy Project. So during their semester of CAPS, they meet with them regularly and connect and learn about each other. It's a great way to learn about End of Generations, just how to hold a conversation, and one of the great activities they wanted to do this year was invite the whole, all of their Legacy Project partners up to the new high school to do a tour. These kids planned a really fabulous day. They got a bunch of old yearbooks out, they had lemonade and cookies, and met their person from Western Home on their buses, and they brought them in, they walked around together, and it was just so much fun to see this whole interaction, and what a great experience for those students, but I think also the Western Home residents really, really enjoyed that. And I think the Legacy Project has been going on for many years and continues to be a big highlight for a CAPS experience for those students, so just wanted to give them a quick shout out. There's a couple more of them giving their tours. Also wanted to do a congrats to Cedric Liu. He's a senior, and he's been named a semifinalist for the 2025 U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. He is one of nine Iowa students chosen, only 1,000 chosen across the country, so congratulations to Cedric for that amazing accomplishment. Also wanted to congratulate Nadia Patel. She's honored as the KWWL Best in Class for Cedar Falls High School for 2025, and of course, that celebrates Eastern Iowa graduates across the area, so congratulations to Nadia. Also wanted to just mention, these two will be recognized along with many other seniors with awards and scholarships tomorrow night at our honors convocation, starting at 7:00 in the auditorium. So anyone is welcome for that. This is the Computer Science Club. They just started this year, and they went to the first, went to their first Technology Student Association conference, and they competed and were honored getting second and third in CAD engineering and second in software development. So congratulations to that group. And then this is a lot of information and lists, but when you look at the number of our students that participate in music in our district, it's amazing, and I just want to make sure to give a shout out to them. They had their state solo and ensemble festival earlier in April. We had 38 events, 34 of those received Superior, four Excellent, and there are three ratings below Excellent. It goes like good, kind of good, and then poor. We didn't get any of those. We got only the Superior and Excellent, and then they also have, the judicators can pick one outstanding performance from their center, and three students were chosen for those. Lucas Halverson English horn solo, Josie Berry alto sax solo, and Alana Reynolds euphonium solo. So congratulations to those students. And then also this last weekend, they had their large group contest, which is actually held at the high school. So all high schools from around the area come and compete in their large groups, and we had eight groups compete, and seven out of those eight received Division One ratings. So I'll be pushing that information out on social media as well, so you can see the list of all those, but congratulations to the music students. They, of course, I think all of the concerts are wrapped up for the semester now at all the levels. We had, of course, all of our All City in April, which was really exciting at the new high school, so it's really been a great, great spring for music students. This is another nice long list, but wanted to give a shout out. This is the Mayor's Top Teen Awards, and we had a lot of high school students that were honored. Of course, they're nominated and then honored for all of their volunteerism in the Cedar Valley, and they're ages between 13 and 18. So these are students, not just seniors, but freshmen through seniors can receive this commendation. So congratulations to all of those students listed for that honor. And this was a great thing. This is a group of Hanson fifth graders, and they participated in an activity with ISU Extension and the NASA Space Grant Consortium, and they did the Plant the Moon Challenge Junior, and they competed against 1,000 teams across the country, were able to go to Iowa State to kind of show off what they had come up with doing this research on different soil mixtures and collecting data over these eight weeks, and they were one of just four Chosen National Best of Show Awards, which is amazing, and I cannot tell you enough how much I love that this is an all-girl team. I will just say that right now. Love to see the girl power there. So they actually went down to Iowa State, they were able to tour some of the areas of the university and some of the buildings, learned directly from the Iowa State students and professors. So what an awesome and great experience, and big congratulations to those girls. Also wanted to highlight, tomorrow at Orchard Hill is their Born to Shine Open House, and this is something that they, it's a student showcase, not just a talent show, but there is something that every student in that building is able to present and be a part of. And something I really wanted to mention, Lauren Nolte, who is the art teacher at Orchard Hill, I think this is the third year in a row she has done this amazing black light art show, and every single Orchard Hill elementary student has an art piece in the art show, which is not, just saying that is not a small undertaking, because that is a pretty large building, but she creates this really cool space that is able to showcase all of these kids' artwork, but it's in like this really cool black light, and she put so much extra effort and energy into that. I really wanted to give her a shout out. But of course, invite, ready one is really open to come. They can come to see that, and then the black light art show is actually open until 4:15 in the building, so it's a really cool thing to experience. Also wanted to congratulate our retirees and service recognition recipients. Of course, a good handful of these are retiring from the district, some already have previously, as you see Dr. Talbot's name, but we're recognizing them now. Other names on there, they are leaving the district and have served 10 or more years. So that's kind of the designation to give recognition to those folks. The reception will be this Wednesday, I believe all of you are aware of that, but starting at 4:30 at the high school, it'll be held in the jungle, but of course, public is welcome to come as well and to give them all their congrats. And then also wanted to mention, next Monday is the ELP Fair, which is Extended Learning Fair, which will be held at Pete Junior High, 5:30 to 6:30. You can see all kinds of demonstrations and information that these students have been working on this whole semester that they'll be able to showcase next Monday. Phew, and then we were gearing up for all the fun things, end of year graduation, of course, congratulations to all those seniors, but then a last day of school will be Tuesday, June 3rd. And then also just wanted to give a quick shout out, we are hiring some coaches for next school year. Veteran coaches, someone that's looking to get into coaching, we'd love to hear from you. So just scan that QR code, and then our HR department will help you walk through those steps of what you would need to do to apply. And follow along on all the end of season activities. All of our spring sports are continuing into postseason and state right now, and then lots will be happening over the next three weeks, so keep track right there.
All right, lots of content. So thank you, Janelle.
And it's even pared down low. Going and going.
Make sure you post it all out, so and get it out to the public. Okay, moving on now, we will go into our April financial reports. So Ms. Gonnerman, you will cover that for us tonight?
Absolutely. If we can pull up the report, thank you. You'll note again, for April, end of April, we're almost at the end of our fiscal year, which will be June, but you'll note for our general funds, and again, our general fund is our overall operations, salaries and benefits of the district. You'll see revenues of $15,419,998.3. That does seem a bit larger than our normal months. That is because that is our second payment of property tax that we would have received for our April. We then did have expenditures of a little over 8 million, 8.4 million. Again, this is a little bit higher than our normal process each month, and that is because of our flow-through that is required for the AEA. That will be, this will be the last time that that will occur for moving forward. Moving forward, you will see that beginning next year on a monthly basis because of the changes associated to the Central Rivers AEA and the AEA's altogether, and how those dollars will now flow through for our special education. But then for our total cash investments, you'll see a total balance of $21,705,999. We move an end to our management fund. Again, the management fund, our primary expenditures would be our property, casualty, liability, insurance, as workman's comp. You'll see those revenues again for $782,000. We did have that inter-fund transfer, which was paid back to our save account, if you recall, during the first, at the beginning of the year, to ensure that we could make those payments accordingly for this fund. We did have to utilize those funds from the save of $900,000. You'll see that transfer out back to that fund with then expenditures of a little over $34,000 for total cash investments of $1,080,000. $34,000 for total cash investments of $1,080,378. We have our capital projects. Our capital projects fund is utilized for the construction of the new high school as we're finalizing all of that, getting closure to that with one bid package still outstanding, waiting for some grass to grow. So hopefully here in the next month or so, we'll be able to finalize that package. But you'll see the revenues associated to that is our interest. We do still have expenditures as we're closing out that package of $789,390 for total cash investments of $1,175,402. You will note that this will be finalized at the end of May, so beginning in June, available balances will be zero at that time. We do have our save, which is our one cent sales tax associated to that. You'll see revenues associated of $711,793. We do have our expenditures associated each month, including our, our transfer out for our debt service payment of $361,376 for total cash investments of $14,67,971. We then do have our PEPAL. Our PEPAL is utilized for our 10-year PEPAL plan, which includes our roofs, our busses, our fleets. We do have our revenues of a little over 1.7 million with our expenditures of 1.8 million. The primary expenditures at this time is our, our auditorium, Phase Two of our auditorium as we're continuing with that, as well as then we are utilizing our PEPAL as a flow-through for the Tiger Performance, Shields Tigers Performance Center, which we, as you know, has seen some activity through that as well. So that is that $1.8 million for total cash investments of $11,237,181. And then we do have our debt service. Again, revenues associated to that with that transfer in, as I indicated earlier, no expenditures this month. You will see some expenditures in the month of May because our requirement of our principal and interest for our payment associated to this will occur in May with total cash investments at this point of $8,894,757. As we move forward then to the next screen, you'll note then our student activity, which is our clubs, organizations, our athletic events. We had revenues of $139,991 with expenditures of $138,235 for total cash investments of We do then have our remaining funds of our agency fund, our enterprise fund, which is our nutrition fund with activities associated to that with revenues of $257,488, expenditures of $329,190 for total cash investments of $3,644,773. Our student coffee shop, which is located at the high school, if you ever get a chance, it's phenomenal. So stop in if you do. You'll see those available balances as well. And then our River Hills Consortium with that zero balance, which we do anticipate at the end of June as well. So the last two slides are then just the end of year balances as of date to our certified budget and where we fall with that. You'll see some reflections in that. Some of that is the capital projects. Obviously, you have a negative because we've continuing to utilize those dollars as needed, but you'll see some others that have increased. And part of that is because of donations or where projects are flowing through. And then that last screen then just shows those remaining balances associated to our certified budget this time last year. So any questions associated to April balances?
Then now, may I ask a club question?
Sure.
So if, if I, if, let's just say someone would like to give to the Rocket Club, and there is not anything, the foundation is not holding anything for the Rocket Club. Are individuals able to give through the district then? So just give straight to the district since you, since you're a 501(c)(3) also? Is that correct? Am I explaining that correctly?
Yeah, that's a great question. We always do encourage all of our individual donors to contact our foundation, to work with them accordingly. If that's not an option or not available for them, they can certainly work with the district. They can contact the district office to identify the areas in which they would like to provide a donation to, and we'll ensure that those funds are based on that donation.
Okay, thank you.
So with the flow-through changing next year, do we plan, or do you plan to change any of those spend or basically just keep it the way it is and just still contract those services through AEA?
Yeah.
Or I guess the question is, do we plan to take on some of those services?
Yeah.
Combination of both. So the, there will be an arrangement with the AEA for several of the services to have those ongoing. There's a whole list of different things when it comes to professional development, support for some content areas, some other specified components that we just know that they have a deeper expertise than maybe we do. There's some other things that we're looking at on how do we pull it in interior or inside of our district, knowing that some of the people that we have can, can do a really good job to support the work we're doing. There will be an arrangement on the reimbursement with the AEA. We've not seen that yet, but we know that some of those dollars that we have used for AEA flow-through will remain with the district and hopefully allow some deeper support within the general fund as well.
Good. Okay, further questions? Okay, hearing none. We will now move on. Item F of the agenda, school board recognition.
Yes, May is always the State of Iowa School Board Recognition. It's a time for us to say thank you for all that you do at your location. There is a certificate from the Iowa Association of School Boards. I don't know if a lot of people fully know that, yes, this is an elected position, but it's a fully volunteer position and unpaid position. You have to be very passionate, focused, and concerned about improving and helping the system entirely as well as our students, and for that, we can't say thank you enough. We do wish that right after this meeting, we could come down in front of the podium and get a picture. Janelle would love to put that and push that out on social media as well. And again, just a thank you from not only the district, but our entire community for all that you do.
Okay, thank you for that. Now we'll move to item G of the agenda, which is a proposed list of 2025 graduates. And I believe we have to read through the list, right?
Name by name. Yes, this is always an exciting time. It's really the culmination of all the work that we do. This is the proposed list of our 2025 graduates. You can see the names within our, our board packets and online. It's a very extensive list, a large graduating class, but certainly a class that has left a lasting legacy for our district. And we're going to be very proud to call them alumni of Cedar Falls.
Andy, I didn't go through and count every name, but how many, how many graduating students are on that list?
I did not either, but it should be right around 390 students, give or take.
Good, well, this is definitely a privilege and an honor. This is one of the fun and exciting and rewarding things that we get to do as a board. Director Peterson has volunteered to infer diplomas at the graduation. That's also an honor to do that. So if there's no other discussion, I will request a motion to approve, to approve that proposed list.
I move the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve awarding diplomas to the Cedar Falls High School class of 2025 contingent upon satisfactory completion of graduation requirements as attested to by the high school principal.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll move to item H of the agenda, which is a special approval of issuance of contracts. So Dr. Patia, I'll let you explain this one.
Yes, this is an annual ask, not something that's required, but certainly helps the district out and put us in a position for, for greater success. There's not a second meeting in May, so what this is asking the board to, to allow is for the district to issue and send contracts to any new employee, specifically teacher, in the next three to four weeks. Those will be brought back for approval before the full board. But at times, especially this time of year, where somebody might have to wait until the next board meeting to be able to be issued a contract, which means they typically won't resign their current position if they have a current position, this just allows that process to speed up and really get those candidates that we really value into those teaching positions. So this is certainly an ask that we would support and hopefully is approved.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that the Cedar Falls Board of Education grant the superintendent or designate the authority to accept resignations for the 2024-2025 school year and to issue contracts of employment for the 2025-2026 school year to licensed teachers and licensed coaches, subject to job candidates fulfilling all usual and customary post offer pre-employment requirements as required by district policy. Such authorities shall be in effect for the period of May 13th, 2025 to June 9th, 2025.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Guess maybe my question would be to our HR director, is, is everything looking good for next year for hiring and filling all our open positions? And I guess, how is it looking?
I think we are pretty confident where we're at this year, and we're in a good, good spot going into June.
Good. All right, there's a motion and a second, so I'll ask for a vote. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And we will move now to item I, which is our superintendent's report.
Yeah, a couple items that have already been mentioned this evening is our service recognition, that is on Wednesday evening, 4:30 at the high school in the jungle, right there in the main entryway as you come into the new high school. Commencement's May 29th, 2:00 p.m., and again, always an exciting day. And again, thank you for Bet for, for, for willingness to be there to, to hand out diplomas. Board retreat, we are looking at kind of a lunch and learn with our building administrators, some just kind of question and answer, tabletop discussion. We've done different things at different times with this, but that would be June 11th from 11:30 to 12:30. And if board members are able to attend, we'd certainly really like that as well. And then finally, within the board packet is the 2025-2026 draft board calendar. If you could just look that over, and, and we can finalize that in June, but it's pretty much corresponding dates in, in the times where I think is pretty traditionally based, based on when we typically meet.
Okay, any questions for our superintendent?
Andy, maybe my ears were deceiving me, but I think you said the 29th for commencement. It's the 25th, right?
Oh, I am so sorry, yes, 25th. Do not get that.
Maybe I heard you wrong, but.
No, if I did say that, it just came out wrong. 25th, sorry.
A lot of parents were probably surprised.
Yes. I apologize. I'm not sure why it came out that way.
And is the board retreat at the administration building?
Correct, yes, yes.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or concerns from board members tonight?
Andy, may I ask a question about the board retreat then?
Yeah.
Is it only an hour?
Yes, we're, we're just.
I just want to make sure.
Kind of doing an informal lunch together, board administrators, and then just have some, some discussions and tabletop discussions, things like that. So kind of just like a lunch and learn.
Okay, thank you.
And the honors convocation is tomorrow at seven at the high school?
Okay.
In the auditorium.
Right, thank you.
And if you have not been to that in the past, that is an amazing night just to hear the wonderful accomplishments of our students as well as some of the recognition they receive for their honors, but also for their scholarship going into the future.
Okay, anything else on anyone's minds?
Just a picture afterwards, please.
Okay. If not, I will ask for a motion to adjourn meeting.
So moved.
We had a tie. Pick one. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for joining us tonight. Have a good evening.